Good evening, citizens of Lewisburg Town Council. And thank you for coming on this very hot summer night to be with us at our July Town Hall meeting. We'll begin by having a roll call of the clerk.
Jessica Stover.
Present.
Jessica Woods.
Here.
Jessica Stein.
Here.
Jessica Wright. Jessica Baker.
Here.
Jessica Lane.
Here. And uh, come forward right here to meet us in our attendance.
Thank you Lord. To the goodness of your time. Lord, thank you for those that were not on that way. Thank you for those that wanted to be able to listen and be good. Lord, be with us in thy eyes. Lord, thank you for the sunshine. Thank you for the rain. Thank you for everything you give us all the time. Peace and love and blessings. Ask with expression to the Holy Name. Amen.
Amen. I request allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic of which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item number one, the agenda of the adoption of tonight's agenda.
Uh, Mayor, I would like to offer the minutes to the agenda.
And your uh, what would you like to include?
All right, I would like to add a item number ten and eleven. Discussion of our noise ordinance and possible changes to it.
You heard the uh, the article here, the agenda. Discussion of the noise ordinance. All in favor of the motion?
So, I guess I move that.
It's been moved in property section that we add. And I put that as item ten and the largest agenda for discussion of the noise. Question? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So that will be item ten A on our agenda. Item number five, the approval of the minutes. Uh, we have minutes for June eleventh, twenty twenty four, our regular meeting and closed session. At June twenty eighth, twenty twenty four, a special call meeting on our question. Not any adjustments or any corrections to any date that I could have possibly approve. The who and property second, that you approve our minutes for the dates of June eleventh, twenty twenty four, our regular meeting closed session. As well as June twenty eighth, twenty twenty four, our special call meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Item number six on the agenda, this is where we have our public comments. This is the time, citizens, which you have three minutes to come forth and uh, give your public comments that you would like to uh, address the council. I have on all this, uh, Dr. Rhonda Schuler. You come forward, uh, over there.
Good evening, Mayor, you know, holding the members of the Town Council and guests to attend this evening. As you mentioned, my name is Rhonda Schuler and I serve as superintendent of Franklin High School in honor to serve the role. I'm here this evening on behalf of the Franklin County Board of Education and our entire school community to extend heartfelt thanks to the Lewisburg Town Council for passing the resolution that your June eleventh meeting in support of education in Franklin County. Your commitment to providing a quality education to the eleven thousand public school and charter school students served in Franklin County means a lot to us, and it demonstrates the teamwork that is necessary to build a school community of excellence in Franklin County. Your leadership in these efforts is invaluable and your dedication to our community does not go unnoticed. Our mission as the school district is to cultivate a dynamic learning environment focused on success beyond the classroom. Preparing, inspiring, and illuminating the path so that all students can reach their full potential. In reading the resolution, you really echo that resolution. We look forward to continuing to work in partnership with you as we forge ahead with the common goal of ensuring that every child in Franklin County has the opportunity to receive a high-quality education that will prepare them for success beyond the classroom. Our community and the children that we serve each day are depending on us to do anything to accomplish that. So thank you for the holding and supporting. Good evening.
Next, Andrea Woodin.
Andrea Woodin at one thirty-four Strangethole. Um, I just wanted to start by saying it has been a year since I first came to the town asking about the crosswalks and I did ask again last month. Um, it really was just a sign on the crosswalk on Main Street to make all the difference. There's still people just speed through all the time. I also wanted to bring the attention um, to the council and say thank you to the mayor and the treasurer who helped to open up the gates at the last Friday nights on the tar. Um, there was an issue with them leaving the gates up at the parking lot yet again, even though the street was shut down. And it really makes all the difference for people being able to walk from the parking lot into the street, have more space to move around. The streets closed anyways. Uh, so thank you to whoever got that done. Um, I also wanted to um, ask about when there's events downtown, especially in the parking lot. If it's going to be taking up space on the streets, if roads are going to be closed down, that someone um, with the town reach out to the business owners downtown and let us know. You know, ob, anything, a heads up, when y'all find out, please let us know. We shouldn't have to go on Facebook and look every day to see what events are happening. It helps us plan our day as business owners. Uh, as somebody who takes appointments, I can let my customers know, hey, traffic's going to be rough, would you like to move to a different day? It also lets us know if we need more help on that day, if there's a festival, uh, that we can have people, you know, and with us and we're not too alone dealing with that. I know that can be quite the issue recently, there was a um, stop at a bike rally and they closed off the parking lot for that. I saw it on Facebook, I know it gave us time. That's it, thank you.
Page seven.
Well, I mean, a lot of my stuff's already been said. Echoing Dr. Schuler with the thanks for the resolution, that's my word number hat. I'm here as the community, the business, small businesses over in town. And first of all, I am so excited that there are different celebrations and festivals here in town. I think that's wonderful. But as a business owner and in talking to the different business owners in that parking lot area, we all want to support everything that's going on. We want to be part of it if we can, or at least tell our customers or our clients or whatever what's going on. The impact of not letting us know can be difficult. If you look at the Kandor Building, they have, some of their clients are older, eighties and nineties, and they go up to the back door and they go in, sometimes navigating that front sidewalk can be difficult. If the parking lots closed and they don't know it, then they can't reschedule those folks. Matt Glaggers, he knew nothing about some of the local things that are going on. Come to work in the parking lots, but this back door is in the parking lot. Two ten Nash, I'm sure is affected as well. You have Selena on the other side, the hairdresser, she's, she has people coming in and going all the time. Visions, I've spoken with them. If parking, you know, parking sites downtown anyway, but at least if they can warn your clients that they will request some extra time to get from the parking, wherever they find parking, into their station or their, their business, their, it would be helpful. Um, Ron has food trucks on occasion. If those food trucks have to be canceled at last minute, they're out of a job. They've already purchased the food, they're losing money, and you have people who are counting on the weekend time, who are unable to. And finally, there's line forty. And what happens is, it grows a perception, if I could just say, parking lot's closed, we'll find other ways, that's helpful. Otherwise, that day I spent, the whole, one fellow's whole work experience, think, it's okay, you don't have to call these people. He was a nervous wreck, couldn't do his job, it couldn't have been a leaving. So I'm not here just to complain, I have a couple suggestions. Parking lot reservation form, that way, and, and, and it's nothing, but it gives you a document with names, contact information, to contact, to people to contact. What is it for? Do you need the stage? What's your start and stop time? Who's responsible for setting up? Who's responsible for cleaning up? How many people are you expecting? Is law enforcement aware? Because if you have a huge thing, I'm sure they would want to make sure everybody's safe at that point. I don't know what the alcohol procedure is, are you planning to serve, do you have the proper documentation? And then you have it signed, and then attached to this form, and I know when they first came up with me at the theater, we received, um, is it my time?
Thank you.
Okay, I have some for everybody, but I want to attach those documents to it, the rules and regulations, and the other part is, I'm sorry, your website is a hot mess. It needs to help desperately, so thank you.
Thank you. Bobby Cooper.
Bobby Cooper, so no one more questions, like those. A couple things, just, um, again, we're speaking in advance of the actions they take, and so.
Mr. Cooper, you have said that every time you come, you know what our.
Two, this is my time, Mayor.
I have the gall, I have, we have the authority to put forth this agenda. And you know that the agenda, the comments might add to the property agenda.
Yes, sir.
You have the right to, when the council, to challenge any one of us, as well as the mayor. You would have then some influence on putting the agenda together. So when you come forward, you know what the agenda is. Now you can proceed, sir.
Well then, my point is that I, I'm not the only person repeating, but I guess I'm part of the group, yeah. So, what I'm addressing are these, these, uh, these proposed ordinance changes. And I have this question, I'm not expecting an answer because it's one side element of it, but whether or not they have been uh, vetted by, by council. Uh, particularly, I'm looking at the Economic Development Ordinance in, as one element. While I, I agree with the concept of a committee that recommends to the council, that doesn't have authority at this point, on the last two items, the uh, it's, it's basically exclusion and se- uh, se- and separability clauses. And I'm not sure if those have actually been vetted. One is that this, this surpasses all other ordinances that may be in conflict, I thought that was a little bit blunt, and a little bit vague. And the other element is uh, a proposed possible change in the ordinance tonight on the, on the noise ordinance that hasn't been publicly uh, demonstrated through publishing on the website. And whether it's been seen by anybody other than Dr. Cooper. That's the limited line for tonight, but I don't appreciate that information. We'll continue to address that in future.
As you rule fit my responsibilities, right?
Uh, well, there you go.
Dr. Cadley.
Good evening, everybody. Um, I just wanted to thank the people that have been in burden so diligently with the cooling stations and providing cold water for people that are walking on the streets in Lewisburg. And um, we have not had a tremendous response at some of the cool food stations. But you know, this is a new concept, for Lewisburg at least, and other places in Lake County, the government officials make sure that the cooling stations are open, which is wonderful. But here, I would like to thank Andrea and I'm probably God piercing and yes. Um, they have had water available for several weeks now. They also do operate as a cooling station. And um, the Democratic headquarters operates as a water station. St. Los Angeles and St. Paul Episcopal Churches both operate as cooling stations. And um, also just because our chaplains out in the country and the United Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints do not have a church per se right here in Lewisburg, but they are providing supplies and helping with the utility bills at the churches that are staying open. Um, please let people know, this is not another homeless project, although we do keep up with where our people in the streets are. Um, and try to provide water and food for them on a continual basis. But this is for folks that maybe want to turn their air conditioner off when it's a hundred and fifteen degree heat index and come sit in one of the churches or one of the cooling stations, read a book or a puzzle, play cards, whatever they want to do for a few hours while they let their electricity be off and save a little money. So please, um, get the word out, would be lovely, wonderful, we would be thankful to have more volunteers. Uh, it takes us a little thin when you're, you only want to sit in that church for a moment or five. But we'll do it because that's what we do. Thank you very much for letting me talk to you about this. That's it.
Thank you. All right. Item number seven on the agenda, closing unnamed alley, Town Judicial Center. Mr. Schley.
Mayor, council, ladies and gentlemen, you will look on your packet that up to page nine, you'll see a small graphic that highlights a uh, an alleyway that has existed on the side of the judicial center uh, since the early twenties or thirties, I, I was unable to trace it that far beyond that period of time, but it's been there for decades. It's not really functional, it serves no really purpose uh, for the site. I know that the issue with the judicial center, while controversial, uh, this is for, it cleans up the site, uh, which has long since been needed anyway. And so, uh, you know, if the judicial center project goes forward, uh, that's, this will be a necessary step. If it doesn't, it just cleans it up. So either way, uh, it really is just a housekeeping matter. Uh, so to remind you, anytime you close a road or an alleyway, this is all uh, basically prescribed under state law, the process by which you do it. Tonight is the adoption of the ordinance, which instructs us to begin that process. This uh, copy of the ordinance is published in the newspaper for four consecutive weeks. We scheduled a public hearing, uh, which will be at the next council meeting. If council adopts it, then uh, we take uh, the next step, which is there'll be an administrative order uh, and then that gets reported in the rest of your needs office. Uh, the adjacent property owners, which in this case would be county, since they own all the adjoining land, will be notified. The property will have to be posted, uh, and that will take care of the statutory note. That's really it. Guys have any questions, give me a message. If council members have any questions, put it in the chat.
This is an alley. On the side of the main courthouse. No, it's not, it's, it's, it, it is adjacent to the parking, you know, the parking uh, on the south side, it's in between that, the building of parking. Even though the parking includes it, that functional alley, but that alley is blocked off at the end. Yes. I don't, I mean, that's just the way it was built.
Years ago, that alley lived from South Main Street between where now the Hamilton Courtyard. That was an old, uh, a lot of you may remember, knowing uh, hard west of there. Walk between that alley, go there, turn right, and come up the side where the Old Moon is. And then it just fed out to the mansion.
So that's town property, is not county property?
No, no, that's town, it's all county.
But the alley itself is town property?
Yes, yes, that part, yes, that's we control.
It's odd because right through the front.
It was just, like many things, you know, historically, things that should have been cleaned up or addressed years ago as a result of the development or changes, just wasn't done.
Any other questions?
Can I get a motion to approve this? So we move the property second that we uh, close this unnamed alley. All the officials, all in favor? All opposed? Item number eight, adoption of ordinance to create economic development ordinance. Mr. Mayor.
Mayor, Town Council, thank you. Uh, in front of you tonight is a request to adopt the ordinance for creation of the Economic Development Committee. As you will recall, at the last meeting, we gave the direction to create such committee, our ordinance, but we have an ordinance in place that details and identifies what this committee will be and what the purpose of the committee is. Therefore, I have the right to back you here to adopt, so I ask for permission to adopt.
Any questions to the, for Sean?
There, there are some provisions here that I think are pretty broad. I think we should look at it, maybe, maybe with the size, that's just my opinion. Maybe a little more specific.
Well, when you're talking about doing away with all previous ordinances, do you know what those ordinances are, the things is? What you want to do away with, we don't know what they are, but we're just going to do away with. Well, that's why I think we need to talk about it, it's pretty wrong when you're doing away with ordinance.
I don't think there was actually a previous, I think it's just a tricky thing.
The only ordinance that we had placed, uh, council, that took us to downtown and Massacre City or something that was really in the top, um, that had longer beats. So I think that was just to, we wouldn't have two separate. But that's the only thing, we're just a little bit.
So, Mr. Edlin, the purpose of this is to solely give council recommendations? There's no, there's no action that will be made by these members?
Right.
And will advertise for the positions?
The positions are already advertised, we received a couple applications. Uh, basically, again, this position, these positions will meet, uh, in the act of consistent, at least five people will be considered a forum. And then items will be discussed, then we'll report to the board, because what they see, they, they think that sugar, and then we'll report.
So there are no ordinances of this is the super.
Yes, applications are allowed, if you're interested.
Any other questions, would you count? Can I get a motion to move forward? Then move the property second, that we move forward on the approval of this, uh, Create Economic Development meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Item number nine, a Lewisburg ABC store presentation, uh, the Daniel.
Dear folks. Good evening, everybody, um, my name is Jessica, I'm just asking for you guys, I didn't get it out of pants. Audience, council, everyone, um, I know you all saw Lewisburg ABC Store presentation on the agenda, and you thought it might be very substantial, but that's right. Um, so, just an introduction, my name is Jessica Ganning. Um, I've probably gone to Lewisburg by home since two thousand and seventeen. I have to, I live on Main Street, run the old store in the historic district, the Shite King House. Uh, I started my career with Lewisburg ABC Store in twenty twenty as a first-time employee, and I was the first woman in the store's history to be hired, which is awesome, we hired several other women after that. Um, I climbed the ranks to assistant manager in twenty twenty-one and now serve as general manager since, um, this past December. We are part of North Carolina's unique alcohol and beverage control system. One of the seventeen states that plays an integral role in managing the distribution and sale of alcohol. Established in nineteen thirty-seven, the control system ensures alcohol sales are handled responsibly and within the community that they serve. Lewisburg joined this initiative on July eleventh, nineteen forty-seven, and for seventy-seven years this month, we've been dedicating uh, the service to our town. Each board is appointed by a city town or county authority that manages the local ABC store within its jurisdiction. Uh, here in Lewisburg, we're a member of the municipality board, different countywide systems like Wake and Durham. Uh, the structure allows us to serve Lewisburg directly. Okay, that's the dry part of the presentation, most people are going to prefer. Uh, this is showing you some of the numbers of how ABC stores can impact their state. In twenty twenty-three, the packets you can see on the first page, um, the ABC system gave seven hundred and ten million dollars to the state of North Carolina, which is huge. Um, Lewisburg ABC alone distributed two hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars to the town. It broke down like this. A significant chunk of our profits goes directly back into supporting essential open services. Fifteen percent of our gross profits goes directly into the Lewisburg Police Department to help our, uh, keep our streets safe. Several percent supports alcohol education through the Department of Health and Human Services, including youth recovery records downtown, which aids in rehabilitation and education for our entire town. Beyond that, all of our net profits goes straight into the Lewisburg General Fund. This means every bottle sold helps pay the debt. This means every bottle sold helps pay for things like public parks, town infrastructure, and community events. So when you shop at Lewisburg, you're directly invested in our town's future. Not only does Lewisburg ABC do this, do all of this, but we also supply six restaurants in town and hopefully county has to grow. Uh we ensure that we provide top-notch beverage distribution by supporting local restaurants and bars. We're helping to boost the town's economy and access dining and entertainment options available to you. Our store offers a carefully curated selection of items, ensuring everyone has access to high-quality products right here in Lewisburg. We take pride in our commitment to providing exceptional service. Our customers often return us even with our other options nearby, though we suspect it might be a store for our pin jokes and great customer service. But it's not that way. Our stores become widely known as local bourbon community. Believe it or not, there is a dozen tank of bourbon. Uh by diligently seeking our out of our allocated bourbon and other difficult-to-find items, we have put our store on the map, grown our revenue, and made Lewisburg a destination for rare wines if we leave that in our small store. Uh in Denver, we hosted our first raffle with three passengers from across the state. Hosting this event boosted our social media presence and our store reputation throughout the area. And our role in this town is far beyond selling spirit. In fact, we're working with a local bourbon club that is currently in the process of holding their own raffle that promotes benefit in the police department in Lewisburg, their national night out in a massive way. Just one bottle of bourbon has raised over $6,000 so far versus spend, which is going to dampen many other purpose children in our community that desperately need exposure to a free school here. And upon giving you all some insight of what I have, what we have accomplished as a team, as my chairman, as a general manager, I kindly request that you, your dealing council members, understand that the new features we helped develop on the ABC board, I'd like you to understand the importance of proper application process. I would strongly suggest you all advocate prohibitions that have financial or business activities and willing to create a new store for our future. Then my conversation, through my conversations with others in all bands, I've learned that order to make a regular store and what I have now is really great. To this matter, I'd like to discuss my chairman, Tom Fancy. For the last three years, his leadership has profoundly impacted our store. His dedication to support, guidance to various challenges he definitely did putting our team through the last three years. It's my advice to you, all that Tom remains in this role determined to ensure continued progress and success for Lewisburg ABC store. His business sense is exactly what we need to consume, driving positive growth, and what they hopefully use for, which is a big undertaking. Uh I would also like to show great appreciation to my other two members, Jimmy and Johnny. Jimmy Burnett and Johnny Williamson, who have played such an important role in our success. But without without their insight, we'd like to not be inside the grid which we are now. So in closing, I invite you all to my store, eat my tea, and see how our work is made for you to be a better place to live. And I'm here to answer any questions and chat more about any cases from those packets I gave you. Um so cheers to Tom Lewisburg and uh to any more here from service. Thank you. Sorry, it's very yours. So any questions? Do you want to schedule a tour?
No, but I would commend you on your bourbon giveaway. I played on league with a lot of folks in Wake County, and they were aware of it, and several participated in it.
Awesome. It's good to hear that. Um that one single bottle that was sold was, it retailed for $1,000. So for that to grow into, uh they're hoping for 10 by the end of this end of the week. Thank you. Thank you.
Item number 10, discussion of the finance director's position to remove under the offices of Mayor and Council. The reason why I'm asking the council to strongly consider this move, this is the finance director's position. This position is a sworn position, just like all of us take a oath. And it is also a bonded position, meaning that it is a very, very important position in the overall operation of the town. This is the only position that's sworn, that is not yet under the uh under the council's responsibility. Now, it will continue to be reporting to the town administration, but answer to the council. I think this is a very needed move because of the growth that we are experiencing, uh the various projects that are going on in the town of Lewisburg. And this position is very important, as I mentioned, and it needs to be under the offices of the uh Mayor and Council. Any questions?
Mayor, I'm going to recuse myself from this item on the agenda. Since this is going to impact our finance director's sheet, so how should you think so? I just want to record that I'm accusing myself.
Yeah, let's move.
Why I have a notion that the board, the council, let me accuse myself from this item. I say.
Okay, it's been moved the property second uh that council is planning to ask for recusal of this particular issue because of uh arrangements in in this position. So all in favor? All opposed? Now, any question that relates to uh of this, this moving of this position under the council?
Your other municipalities to this also? That have our structure of government?
Uh.
Amendment.
To amend the code, to have this position moved under the.
Yes.
Okay, well, I think council have done this report. I think they have done that uh with the fire chief position.
We've always required you. It has changed from a full file numbers to direct hiring, but we always read their appointment. I don't know the exact answer to your question, councilor's side, but I, my gut feeling is no. In my going to conferences and meetings with other borough councils around the state, with our population being around 3,500, we are by far the largest council that is still a mayor council, if not council manager. I would argue the opposite logic. As we're willing, we need to leave order into council manager and trust your duties to our current administrator. Maybe one day we do get to where we start charter and becomes a true manager position. My interior is important, but so is the administrator. I don't know that we've had any issues with the current arrangement, and I'm not seeing any real change. In my opinion, it would be a setback for the grid mindset of what's. Just for comparison, most of the other numbers from other council, mayor council municipalities, their populations are four or five hundred, maybe. Anybody here in the house that is council manager, is what you post by experience?
By far, on the day-to-day operation, we're not sitting at how all the help or guide are finding is correct for for manage the town. That's why we have an administrator for that duty.
That's why this position would be reporting.
So then what is our influence? That we hire the director, it's all of your saying?
Yes, yes, moving forward, moving forward because of the fact that this is a sworn position. It is bonded as well. No other position under it could find it. Because of the.
Or our police officers not bonded, or sworn in, or sworn up.
All of us are sworn in.
And so are our police officers.
And the chief answers to the council. So he answers. So this is the only sworn position outside of the realm of answering to the council and 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 there. Well, this is, and I think it's appropriate because of that. And and the real important thing about it is that it's bonded. It's a bonded position.
It's at least been a bonded position.
And and even more so, being that we are going, having different projects going forward, doing different things. And the fact that, you know, anything that happens, not saying it will, hope it doesn't, but you know, all is encouraged. I just think we need to be close to it, or that position need to be close under supervision of Mayor Council because of those factors.
So day-to-day, you're all being managed?
No, day-to-day, she's doing her job and answering to the administrator.
So we've been basically going, basically, hiring and firing. Otherwise, the individual would be reporting to the county manager.
That's correct. And he is also, also the executive director. So, and he's working very closely around a day-to-day base. Well, working very closely with that position on a day-to-day basis.
All the other bonded positions are directly under the council right now. Is that correct?
Aye.
All the other bonded positions are under our authority right now. This is the only one that's bonded that's not under the council.
Mr. Medlin, you're our administrator. In, I heard your recommendation, has the mayor discussed this book beyond her?
Of course. He doesn't, he doesn't have the answer. That question is.
I directed that to Mr. Medlin.
And I asked him.
And I brought it to you on call.
We have discussed it.
I can hear from this.
That's the answer to your question.
Mayor?
We have discussed it.
Mayor, I'm asking.
Just go.
I will say that the mayor has come in and asked for this to be. Uh Dr. Stever, to answer your question about being bonded, the finance officer or the director is the only bonded position in the town. The only position. So that position currently is not called under the council. From from a perspective as administrator, my role is to conduct and operate the town's day-to-day operations. That's what you hire people. If I don't have the ability to hire and fire new finance, to me, that could be involved. Because as as this position typically falls under a manager or an administrator, they work closely together. Our councils change inputs, the finance officer, in an awkward position because there are costs involved with you people if the board changes. If it doesn't change, it's good. But it's been changing the last seven years. So that individual would be working with several people. And if you have people who are not finance-oriented, it can make it difficult. So I I would say that my recommendation as an administrator is that finance director position.
Ben, I have a question. You were stating that this is not currently part of our charter. For what would you refer it to?
Well, the title, the. And you're confined to. About show, about.
Police department.
That's it. Everybody else has to show.
So what would we have to do to change that administratively?
You're closed. That's what you're closed. Change your code just a bit.
Would that be a process in the state?
I think you can do it with a minute.
I think the question is that it's a code ordinance or is it in the charter? It sounds like code ordinance.
We are not, this, again, this is a very important position. We we have changed codes before. We've done that. It is something that is not impossible to do. My concern is that auditing person and and the position still answer to the administrator. Still answer to. He works day-to-day with that position. Administrators change, just like council people change. So that presents an argument there. A new administrator or a manager has to reestablish a relationship just like a council. So that's my, my thing is that I'm concerned about auditing and and the importance of this being a bonded position. Having said that, uh no other comments because I'd like to make a motion that be moved forward by this. Or if anyone would like to offer an amendment to that motion.
What do you mean by this?
I mean, this. Do we can?
Want to change the code?
That's what they're saying. So that's.
So what's the difficulty in changing the code for this?
Well, you know, you can't have two masters. You can't have a show that you ought to. It just doesn't work that way, as you said. This here is a. That's what I was going to ask. So I don't see that. You have a bonded person. That's the big, well, please.
Okay.
I think.
This is just a discussion. Here's no decision that has to be made.
So I'm open to evolve. After a period of discussion. So we have this, so we can, as a result of bringing this up, continue this discussion sometime out of late time at this city, probably to go here. But that was, that was my. Discuss it that way. Can move on if any others have any other questions. I'd like to evolve this thing to give perspectives. And move forward. You have to do it the right way. Item number 10A, discussion of the noise.
Thank you, Mayor. I think we're all aware that there's been a lot of concern by our public about the problem of noise here in Lewisburg. We have, I, as I see it, three major problems. We've got automobiles that have modified uh muffler systems or basically don't have muffler systems. They have people blaring their radios so loud that you're hearing two blocks away. And then we have the problem of engine braking. I've had a long, long time of people complain about this issue. So I've taken it upon myself to make some suggestions here. It's in your packets that we hand out tonight on the modify our noise ordinance to address this problem. The changes I am suggesting are all outlined in red or things I have suggested take out of the ordinance. Get a strike. If anybody has any questions. But basically, what I have recommended, one, that we make it clear that our ordinance applies at all hours of the day and night. Some people mistakenly feel that the current ordinance only applies at night. Secondly, I've taken a few things to clarify that we specifically are injecting to any modification of an automobile or motorcycle to increase the noise from its muffler system. And and if it is a stock system, it's still going to not be our ordinance. Uh also, I specifically have added engine braking. Does anybody know how an engine braking is? I don't. Yeah? Well, that's when a vehicle is coming, usually downhill. The biggest problem is on work vehicle, uh, the transfer trucks. Instead of using their brakes, they downshift into a lower gear and use the pressure of the engine to slow the vehicle down. Saves on their brakes, but it makes a tremendous amount of noise. And they're doing this at all times of day and night. This is a very common thing to this outlook in many municipalities. It's fine if you're out in the country, but if you're coming down the sports vehicle, Boulevard, houses on both sides and a hospital, it's a very annoying, to say the least. There are exceptions in this our ordinance, I haven't changed them. Where, you know, for legitimate processes, they require ways of mowing your lawn, destruction work that can be done for daylight hours. And then the last thing I've added is a section at the end where we put up signs and all our major interests is indicating that we do have a ordinance that is strictly enforced and that engine braking is not allowed. So I would like to submit this as a proposal. Any questions?
I have a question about the fines.
I'm sorry?
I have a question about the sign, uh, the fines.
Okay.
You were actively against raising the fines before and now you want to raise it?
Oh, fines, um.
I mean, I'm in agreement with what you're wanting to do with the fines.
Right, uh, I, this is a, I understand what you're saying. I think this is a situation where we're not going to put an undue bound burden on people. I mean, if somebody is going to spend all the money to modify their truck to annoy the entire town, I think they can afford these, uh, sign, these fines. And they need to be sufficient enough to make sure that people stop this.
Like I said, I agree with the fine, but I just.
Yeah, I.
Contradicted to what you discussed earlier.
And I think that's another issue. I'm, I'm certain it would not be opposed in the future to adding something like community service as an alternative to the fine. But, uh, I think that's the future discussion.
Is there, I have a question.
Sure.
Did you show this in work with our staff regarding?
Yes, I did work with Mr. Medlin, I talked with Jason.
I, in our ordinance department? Because there are codes of ordinances that we got to follow. One dash six, section one seven, B and C, on how to properly write an ordinance. In which, I like your wordage, it's just that, um, I know that last week I spoke to, uh, Mr. Slater regarding email. I'm sure that everyone on the council received regarding the citizen regarding the noise problem. So I went and I spoke with him. Cause I wanted to see what our ordinance stated. It said the ten to seven rule in which I hear something. I live in, and my neighbors are close. And there are ones where I hear the same, I hear the brake brakes being locked, I hear the cars. I hear the music, I hear it all also. But I would also not to use our police department to organize them to be the noise place all the time. Because it's. We're gonna stay this. If you can, if you would base on interpretation.
I could point out the city broadly.
I, I'm, I'm a customer.
I, I totally disagree with you. Um, we have many ordinances that allow our police officers to make judgments. And I guess Jason actually discussed this with the, while the police department, see how they are. Earlier this year, they actually, if we looked at the white horse. They had all this stuff. And Jason said, yeah. Organized. What were the questions? All right. They did away with that. They did away with all the indications and they basically put it in the authority of the officer. What is a recent? Situation where they, is this annoying the public? And I ain't putting out faith in our police officers to think that they can make that judgment. And I think the vast majority of people when they get the fine, are they gonna go pay then? To spend five thousand dollars to spend it for? No, I think they're gonna basically pay the fine, they're basically, I have my best friend's son got fined over a white horse with this variation. What did he do? He ended up taking a muffler off his truck and went back to the stock.
What occupation was that he worked with staff writing the ordinance?
Well, if there's any, there's, I mean, basically it had to be very minor changes to these. So, uh, there is a need to make any further change. I recommend you approve the occasion. Just. You, I want to make sure it's compliant with laws. They know.
So, just to make this clear, you are asking for twenty-four hour a day noise violations?
Yes. All right, I mean, I don't think there's a difference between somebody, you know, only screaming, which happens regularly when they're, you know.
It's a traffic violation? That's a traffic violation?
No, it isn't. Because they're not going faster than the speed limit. They're leaving their, uh, gear, second gear, so the engine revs up and makes all kinds of noise. Where they just shift in the third gear, the noise would be much less. Believe me, I know about this, they used to do it when I was a kid. And I had friends that, so, no, it, it is just annoying at three in the afternoon as it is at three at night. There is, I make this as a proposal.
I'm for this, I've also received a lot of complaints about noise. I've been involved with noise too myself, living on Main Street and so. But I don't know about approving it and modifying. Um, but we, the most appropriate way would be to table it, form review, buy Mr. Slater, have, um, Jason take another look at it in the next month's meeting if he can take a vote on it and not let it sit review. Um, cause I wanna sit on it, but I also, I wanna do our due diligence to make sure all of this is covered. So we don't have to do something and then undo it and redo it. I think it should be properly vetted by staff before we approve something and we take action on it. And then it comes back, it'll be a whole other nightmare. We, we want that fixed. So that's my recommendation. I agree with him. Maybe, um, you can sit down with the staff and bring it back at the next meeting. For proposals. I, I like the, I like the rules in the, I agree totally with most of it. I think that we're gonna have a pretty hard line in the community passing a twenty-four hour a day noise ordinance. Because, um.
It's not dumb noise. It's, it's noise disturbs.
Okay, all right.
And the ordinance already has specific exceptions for legitimate things like mowing the lawn or destruction. It's basically targeted against three things. Loud mufflers, loud music, and engine braking, which is annoying at any time of the day.
Well, there's nineteen options here with an additional line, so that's not three things.
That's already in the, I'm not changing the, that's already exists. I'm making like six changes in the ordinance.
Are you okay with, with staff flipping it over?
Yeah, I think it's fine, I think it's an unnecessary delay, but that's, the council is presented and I would go by it.
At least we would have something in the books, I think, there's some type of noise, uh, was on the books. And, uh, how would we be forced, uh, to, uh, discussing, well, uh, the part that you made and stress another office of this, uh, to, for getting into all of the details and all of it. At least we were having official, but on the books for noise.
There, Councilman Bright, I believe, had something to say, you didn't get to say about it, maybe you still want to say it.
Oh, it's okay.
I just, he didn't say or I just tried to make sure to.
Because I know they have cards showing this stuff, so I read on that card too.
I make a motion to table to the next meeting, let the staff vet it, do what they need to do with it and bring it back next council meeting.
So move this probably second, we, uh, let the staff vet this and, uh, and come back, what the next council gives us, the details, we can, uh, put on available.
All right.
All right. Item number eleven, your name's David Ford.
Mayor, thank you. Uh, the Main Street Bridge cleanup project, which blew the strap program is complete. If you haven't been out and it really been hard to see what has been accomplished, please do so, it looks really good. Uh, interviews are underway for the public service to leverage this issue. Work on the pocket park in Orange Lane and Howard Lane as you go. If you have anything about there, please do so, it looks really good. Uh, the college, the, the last meeting, we were asking each other to college, they were interested, uh, in the realignment of the College Street project. They are interested, um, we have some drawings from twenty twenty. Uh, and I've actually taken the liberty to pull those out to a contract, just to get the best rate of calls. Of course, without the proper computer procedures, but just to get a estimate, you know, what those would be, uh, since there is an interest there. Uh, Charge Point has been contacted regarding to legalize it soon. Um, and, and what we need to be changed in the charge. Uh, we actually got some information late this afternoon, I've not had an opportunity to review that. Um, so I will review that and get that out to you. Uh, again, got this received this afternoon late and I apologize that I didn't appreciate that tonight, until this afternoon. Uh, Friday Night on the Trail will be held on July the nineteenth, uh, from six to nine, featuring the amazing Wild Lizard Lizards. Uh, so please come out and support this. And last, but not least, just maybe the next one. It's a passion, please, thank you.
Item number twelve, the, the answer board. Some things that I did this month there, uh, I was fortunate to meet the Chief Executive Officer at the council, County Nate Shaw, and I visited their company and took a tour of their plant. Uh, Mr. Gil Mates, the CEO, as well as Mr. Helen Lee. Uh, they had initially reached out to the town of Lewisburg, wanting to try to with, uh, various projects that we are doing here in town and to get more involved with the town of Lewisburg. They willing to do various things, even made a suggestion of sponsoring some scholarships for disadvantaged students. Anything that they can help to give themselves an imprint in our community, show that they care about the community, they are here, they're honored and they want to do whatever they can from a business perspective to help the town of Lewisburg. And that was a wonderful trip. Uh, hopefully we can establish a good working relationship with the council moving forward. Also prepared a proclamation recognizing the one hundredth birthday of a dislusting father, father at the Lewisburg Nursing Center. Uh, she had, she celebrated her birthday on June fifteenth, which is a hundred years old. There are not very many centenarians here in Franklin County. But when we have them, we'd like to recognize them for their long death. And, uh, give them homage for giving such a long life. And that, that happened at the Lewisburg senior citizen on, uh, June fifteenth. Also attended a virtual seminar on grant writing, uh, from the, from the municipalities. This is something that is very important, which they laid out in that seminar, how important it is for writing grants. They laid out the preliminary, they gave out the reports on how, as you apply for grants, how you can determine, uh, if you're successful or not for a grant. There are a lot of grants out there and, uh, we can be successful in these grants once we know the preliminaries in determining whether it's being asked. And we, and, and how we can be more successful. I got the very informative seminar and it's a continuing seminar. There is a series. And I would, uh, urge council, uh, to take advantage of that as well. Uh, that is something that I think will help the town of Lewisburg far more as short as grants is concerned in the future. I attended retirement dinner for Officers Greg Austin, Sharon Brinkley, Joe Sherrill. This was a great event, uh, at their retirement party. Uh, I saw a lot of people there, uh, friends, family, and, and others, former police officers there as well. It was a very, very, I call it gala event. Uh, set three, three officers aboard that they were creating, that's been created. As a result of their retirement, it's huge, uh, but confident that we can move forward and, uh, and building that home. It was a great event. Finally, I attended the dedication for building for one of our great citizens here in Franklin County, this, uh, this Rosalind E. She has a building that is named after her now on Courtyard Street. And how they came about, you don't know, this Rosalind E, an African-American woman, was the first African-American to vote in Franklin County. Now, in order for her to do it, she traveled eight miles of human wax and came to Lewisburg at that very courthouse right up there. Determined to cast her ballot to vote. However, during that time, it's very difficult for people of color, African-Americans to vote. They challenged her. In order for you to vote, we want you to state the preamble to the Constitution of the United States. She did that. The powers that be figured that would be a challenge and she would be unable to accept and overcome, therefore not allowing her to vote. She did something and made history by casting the first vote by an African-American in Franklin County. And as a result of that, she came active throughout the rest of her life on other buildings again. And as a result of that, the legacy that she created, uh, the builders and remodelers and owners of that building, right across the street. Started to name that building after her. There's a plaque there, so for anyone, they, they, or they can see the plaque there. And I think it was very, very appropriate to name the building right next to the other building where she made it. So that was a very, very, as historical, uh, ceremony as well. It's Rosalind Franklin Kelly. Thanks for your thoughts, uh, please report.
Good evening, Mayor. Mr. Uly, I'm the fourth council report. The one is deploying access to the recognition made for already tested on a three long serving members of our team at the time. We're resource officer, Sharon Brinkley, Sergeant Joe Sherrill, Sergeant Greg Austin. I'm a former member of the council, before attending that service. Number two, recruiting retention. We have three recruits that have accepted additional officer employment that is scheduled to begin this month. Number two, recruiting retention, we have three recruits that have accepted additional offers to perform, and are scheduled to begin this month. I hope to be able to introduce, uh, some of the experience you mentioned. We also are currently conducting a background investigation on a recruit, if this is successful, it's a field aspect of the position that we have to accomplish. Uh, number three, is complaints against police officers, findings, there were none. Number four is a use of forces, big pursuits, officers attempted to stop before they were on Vicodin Boulevard, the sheeps, the operator of the A K B refused to stop. They also pursued the town, they drove through neighborhoods, through hours, running outside of the police. Uh, the suspect was a juvenile, I think they were contested, no injuries to report, and that was the most important. This is not in your packet, um, the report was generated before this happened, but this past Sunday night, it was for officers by the speaker on Vicodin Boulevard, and took the, uh, officer on pursuit, and started to navigate, so already, there were some injuries in the red. Charges had been taken out against either the supervisor called in this, and I would throw this out in the association. So, that's it. Number five, the double investigation, comparisons, and this is their review, uh, that really stands out, and it's worth a thank. Number six, the budget summary, um, 23, 24 years standing, we're out, next, just a few. Number seven is the training summary, uh, officers received training, the most fun, used to say, during the fall, this one. Lastly, is the community outreach, special events, officers participated in the one of the birthday celebration program, this little one. And staff are actually back, there are 190, I'm basing it for the month. Um, I'd like to remind it, I'm gonna do that, this is not in fact, we do that, my half, another officer said, he had trauma partners, six days, you know, for all the hours, which is bad. Um, also, I want to thank Jess, she did a good job, it's awesome. Anytime ladies come near the police department, she's done a good job, thank you for that. Um, lastly, I, I do think it's a good idea for the council, as we do, over with, over with you. We want to make sure it is right, and we want to make sure we do it possible through the district attorney's office, they can need to get there, and, and, for, for, so, I think that's a good thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, quick, you got it?
I'd like to keep that, uh, think of those reports, I would like to put an attachment in there to, uh, exclude diversity. Just from that out there, I was tired, please say, I think that's already... Okay, just let me show, uh, I want to get it pulled over, go to the first cell, so, uh... That's what I get, right? So, to get, get the information in the package, I do have people that stand up to, uh, address real quick. Update on the air conditioning, that's where I completely borrowed it, and start replacing it, uh, there, every business is in the back, so, uh, the back of your book will be a little bit more comfortable. It hasn't been lasting months, so, sorry about that. Um, as of yesterday, July 8th, we are fully staffed now on the career side, and we have nine careers fully, that's great, if you expect to get into that account, including that. And with that said, it's also improved the old census spots that we had, I sent an email out on July 3rd, throughout the council members, and I wrote it down for the last three months, as a six towards anchors, that we had from April to June, so, I mean, that, that, that's big news. Adds up to the guys that, that work here in the department. I've also had, uh, if you ride a lot of stations, go see a lot of cars in the parking lot, during, at any time, during the day, if we can, that's nice, come hang out in the station, with the train, brother there, uh, go fellowship amongst one another, and know each other better, and, and just being here ready for that open drive, that we've got to have, first down the truck. That, to me, is a sign that, not probably, it's, it's increasing around, I know you're getting a lot of static from outside, from one or two members, I know it's happening quite frequently. Um, also, that email on July 3rd, I sent out, I told this to everybody, we need to, we need to make up calls. It's like you're talking about your diligence on this, on this couple of weekends, do you do diligence on that, and call the members of my department, and ask, talk to them, they do it, and all of them, uh, you get there, I'm just here for them, I'm just here from a bunch of two other people that are outside, and, and... Because, as y'all know, each one of you can make everybody happy. I'm not here for that, but I got a business, I'm just looking, we're gonna say lies, and that could hurt. Also, my door is always open, please, if you have a question, I'll, I'll provide it to you every day, you know, hey, you got a question? Come see, just like, if you had, if I had a question, come see, if I should go right there, so I have a question, um, Mr. Adam Cooper, I'm, I'm over the booth. So, again, giving it opportunity to defend myself, hold my members, whether they don't want to hear, I doubt that. Uh, any questions for me? I'm gonna say one more thing, July, yesterday was the last hand-to-hand seat guard training that we had, we had two sessions. I come out here at about 4:15, it was 14 people coming in, and I was, I was, I'm still waiting on the final numbers from, from July, as they, the first day, we did 24, 10 employees, you know, during the day, so, I, I was drinking as well, so, uh, so provided the strength, we worked together, we're here to be, we're a job. If there'd be anything, my door is always open, please come see.
Thank you, Chief, good luck. Item 15, Councilman, comments, uh, Councilman Clancy? Uh, your comment, Mayor?
Uh, yeah, I have a little comment. I also attended the police retirement center for three of our long-term members, those of all who are recent, uh, Franklin Cheryl, were former S R X Y, I was going on police some years ago, because this is their vacation, um, I wish them well for retirement. I also attended the building dedication, dedication, now it's out, it's a sort of, the mayor's already excited for story, I think she is a wonderful icon of Franklin County history, and again, can't be given more over it, the building was, was square, dedicated to her, um, but to add consideration of whatever downtown buildings, good job. Other than that, I'm just gonna take it easy, having a vacation, hopefully trying to sleep inside out of the heat, thank you for coming.
Councilwoman Bright?
Yes, hot here, and I bet you couldn't hear me without that, but, um, I had a pretty light month, because I like to stay inside in the air, and not go out in the hot heat, where I can get you hyped up again. But I had to, uh, it was just a fast month, and, um, they were great, I had to, I had one, I was the president, that's it. Um, also, I also attended the banquet for the retirements from the police department. Officer Cheryl also, after his retirement, his last form of duty was coming to my church, he had a mental health workshop, and he was excellent, we had a guy out of Greensboro that came to do the talk, also should have given money to y'all, and we told him we'd be to last time, he's coming. But, uh, we had a lot of people to donate, to help us with that workshop. We had, uh, different ones that just gave and gave, and it wasn't till the same time as Roselam, they put, and Miss Roselam is the person that got me involved in public, doing things, and running for office, and certain things, uh, because she was the person that could talk to you, and she liked it, and you can do according to that. And you like, you know, you always want to look up to your elders, and thank you for, I thank God for her, and get done, and, and this, everybody else. And I just had the lights in, tied, 49, it was 2:15, we got to the final break, but that girl, you know, and, so...
Councilwoman Bright?
Well, it was a great month so far, um, I attended that CPR training, um, I've taken CPR many times throughout my life, but I felt like I needed a refresher. I'm very thankful, do not call me one, one in doubt, um, always do that first, if, if you ever see an emergency, but, um, I appreciated that, I thought it was well-attended, and I hope that they do it again in the near future. One of the things that they did ask is they are trying to build a database of where there are A D, um, stimulators throughout the community, and so if you are at a facility that has something like that, the county is building a database of that, so that they can put it out to the community to try to addition for housing, so, if you know of one, um, please contact the county, um, they have a scan thing there. Um, please attend Friday night on the card, I'm gonna be quite sober by then, and today, I attended a very informational and beneficial meeting with the London Cities, who we get our power from, and it was a very good conversation about rates and how the network works, and what we can do to better serve the community. One of the things that I'm advocating for is that when there is an outage or information that needs to come to the customers, a better way to do that. Um, right now, we do have that micro text, if you go to our website, there's this little link that pops up everywhere that encourages you to do that. But as for now, Facebook, we try to put information on there also, but follow the town's page for information. And Saturday mornings from 8 to noon, um, we've been having farmers market next to the parking lot downtown at Town Hall. If there are vendors that have produce, who eat, has really heard, um, farmers, so, um, I, I really enjoy meeting people by doing that, and putting it for off to the community, so, um, guess, watch the heat, it's seriously off right now, so, that's it for me.
Councilwoman Woods?
Can y'all hear me? I'll just use my teacher voice. Um, I also attended the fair, and through my colleagues, the building education forum, it showed that it is a very wonderful dedication. I also got to attend the collision, I've done a brief, wonderful officers who served their time. Um, I would like to say thank you to those who have set up the cooling stations for, for people, that is an awesome task, so thank you to those. Thank you to our police officers for just keeping our community safe. Thank you to the firefighters, we're glad that we are fully staffed, damn, thank you to those. And school is out, so please, 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 be mindful of children, they're running around, they're playing, you know, so just be mindful of the kids, not just in the neighborhood, but that are walking. Uh, a couple of weeks ago, a couple of my students, obviously I had kids up here, right across the street, so just be mindful. That's another reason why we need some things for them to do, but just be mindful of the kids that are out, they're gonna be playing and just everywhere, so just be mindful, and thank you.
Dr. Stowe?
Well, last week I was on vacation, but I was still thinking about Lewisburg, I rewrote the, uh, noise ordinance, but I also had a lot of concern about the crosswalk now, crosswalk downtown. Did you, sir, I T? Did you get the picture that I sent you?
Yes.
Try it up. James, I'm sorry, I'm terrible at names. Uh, I saw this on my vacation, and I thought this would be a very appropriate thing to bring it up. But it's to basically raise the crosswalk and make it a speed limit itself. Uh, this is in the, uh, Tanger Outlet Mall in Bluff, South Carolina. Uh, I think Wade Forrest has done this in some of their crosswalks. But basically, it's a, by raising the cross, the, the, um, crosswalk, you force the traffic to slow down toward the cross. I don't have any idea what the cost is of something like this, I don't think it would be too great, but I think it's something we ought to consider, as a way to slow the traffic from the middle of town. Um, I've also been discussing with, uh, Mr. Bedlam, possibly opening the, the, uh, alleyway next to the Lumpkin Building, so we can access parking lot where you're having your, uh, where, where the farmer's market is, you know, the parking lot in the middle of town now, during busy hours, it's getting full. And we have these two parking lots behind Town Hall that are underutilized, where people have to walk all the way around right now because the alleyway's closed. So I'd like us to look at opening that alleyway, maybe putting in security cameras and, uh, we're just planning in some committee floor or presentable, that is a way for people to have easy access to parking behind Town Hall. I also like to point out that the Economic Development Committee has now been approved, the application is online. Uh, people will go ahead and make the application, would like to get this committee up and running, uh, within the next, uh, 30 to 60 days. And a lot of the issues that came up tonight would be very much, uh, in the purview of this committee. So, um, if you're interested, please apply.
Sure. Move it probably second, that we are sure, I'll say.
Hi.
Alright, I'll go. Thank you again, citizens, for coming out to this meeting tonight. I was thankful.